I call this, Susan is sick. I want to share, unless you printed one out?
No, I printed it out for the agenda. It didn't have all the back.
See, I just saw her though. She was coughing.
He's got a fever.
I'll see my ones and push them.
Susan comes, Susan comes in.
Okay. She had the agenda.
I call this, May 14th, 2013, work session to order.
Hi. You all right?
Okay, roll call, Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iron, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
In, he's on his way.
Okay, and Councilmember Joe Gabriel, District 4.
Here.
All right, so if we need to run an executive session right now?
Somebody needs to amend the agenda.
I would like to move that we...
Is he not ready?
Who?
I would wait for first. Or waiting for one.
Okay.
Do you think Bates is close to?
Yeah, he is.
We can go into executive session when we're along, Jim and you.
Yes.
During the meeting, all you have to do is make a motion to amend the agenda.
During the meeting, okay.
And amend to add on that, and you can place it at that point in time if you need to.
All right, so...
Do you want to go ahead and amend the agenda now?
Well, we just go through it, then we'll amend it when we can, go through the executive session. I don't have any opening remarks, so there's no motion. The remarks, Agenda Review. You want to do the Agenda Review for the work session?
Yes. Okay, if we can go to the council agenda for this evening.
All right.
On your consent agenda, we'll find with the approval of all the amendments, and the fourth item in particular is the clarification and approval of term limits for the boards and commissions.
Okay.
Under old business.
There were a couple of minor changes to the minutes.
Yes, on one of the motions, we changed the name from Williams to Madison.
Okay.
And we added the number four. There were four bids received for the auditing services, and I just added the number four in the minutes. For Jim Iron's recommendation, Councilmember Iron.
Okay. No, that was the other, we just said two. All right.
Williams.
Okay, the first item under your old business is the ordinance to create the stormwater utility.
This is a second read in passage of just the ordinance changes. Again, we're not passing the fees at this time, just the ordinance itself, which will establish the stormwater utility.
Gotcha, all right.
The next item is consideration and approval of the intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the City of Brookhaven for police services. We're going to have to have that deferred.
Okay.
The city attorney and I are meeting with DeKalb County tomorrow. Our police chief and his deputy will be attending with me in that meeting. So hopefully we'll have a resolution to that IGA, and it'll be back on your agenda for next meeting number 28.
All right. Okay.
Okay. New business, Susan Cannon.
Public hearing, RZ 1301, is the property on Orfoud Hills Road. This item is on your agenda tonight for a request for a six-day deferral. The planning commission heard this and recommended that it be deferred, and the attorney will be here tonight to request a deferral.
Does anybody have any thoughts on whether to defer or not?
Do we want to extend the deferral after what we heard last night about the July 3rd conflict? Can we extend it for 90 days versus 60, just because of, we heard last night from some citizens?
Who would, who would we want to, I mean? If we deferred it, what would be the next date in the calendar that they would have?
I don't have that calendar with me.
We'd go back to your planning commission first, because they recommended deferral.
But they have a calendar reset, right?
They actually recommended a deferral date certain, which would be then back to the, that was their recommendation, date certain, which would then put it before the 1/23rd, which is what you're talking about.
But if we deferred it longer, or if we pastulate it, what would be their next?
Does anybody have, are they saying August, do you have a calendar?
Yes, August the 7th, is that the first Wednesday?
Right.
August the 7th.
All right, problem with doing that? Any problems, where do you all foresee, are there any issues?
Well, I think if there is an attempt by the current applicant to work out a resolution, and if they work it out sooner, then they're going to sit and they're going to have to wait.
All right.
And if they're asking for this deferral, if they've certain and the planning commission agreed with that, I think that they've set their own time limit. So I would propose and recommend to you all to allow the date that the planning commission announced as the deferral time.
So apparently the builder or the developer was supposed to be meeting with, and one of the people in the audience confirmed it last night, there will be a meeting on the 20th of this month. And then after that, there would be opportunities for the citizens to come to you.
The revised plan would be submitted by May 31st.
May 31st.
We would re-advertise and write a new report and post a new sign of property, run it out of the paper, and write a new report.
Well, after that, from May 31st to July 30th, 33 days is long enough to have votes. Do you want to protest, or work out something, or report it? That makes sense. What are your, what's your thought on that?
Well, the date certain, I think what the people were concerned about was that they thought that that date was picked in line with the poll, and that was an adoption. That's certainly not time, and then that would set it to the council July 11th and July 30th.
So the vote for us would be after the July 4th?
Correct.
Yeah, July 23rd, yeah.
Your first meeting would be the 11th, and then the 23rd.
Any thoughts, Rebecca, regarding that? For Bates is in your district.
We're talking about the... The Drew Hills, Jim would ask if it would be prudent for us to extend the deferral period from the Drew Hills property, so to put it past July, it'd be in August 7th. Yeah, it'd be August 7th. Talking about it, Marie commented that...
So it's a whole month to develop it?
Well, it could, but you know, I think it's enough time from May 31st when they develop, when they submit the plans, and they were to get it, and it would be a month, a little over a month later. The planning commission will be advising to us, and then we'll be voting on it the 11th and the 23rd.
So the idea is to push it 30 days?
No, this Jim just wanted to know.
I asked the question, after what we heard last night, was ready...
Well, I certainly, I think there's a lot of neighborhood interest. As long as there's enough time for the pieces to get in place where there's, you know, developer or property owner has the neighborhood meeting. Prior to their submitting a plan, I think that's the real piece to this puzzle.
It would be seven weeks from the day they submit the plan to when we would have a final vote on it.
Yeah, it seems to be plenty of time.
Is that right?
Yes.
But if you're asking for a public meeting prior to submitting the plan, that gives them two weeks to do that, because the plan is due May 31st. And so you have two periods, prior, before the plan, basically two weeks. Before the planning commission is six weeks, seven weeks, so you know...
They've already had two weeks to set it up, and guess another two weeks, I think is plenty of time.
I appreciate you, you know, talking about it, because we want to make sure that there isn't time, so we'll talk through it, and I think this is probably adequate. A good question.
Can I take this opportunity just to make mention of something regarding, just as an example of this process? We have, Susan, your community development director, has mentioned, and we've discussed in previous meetings about some text amendments that we want to come back and just clean up. And this is a very good example, from the standpoint of the way the ordinance reads now, if an applicant asks for a deferral, and they're at the planning commission level, remember, they're your recommending body. They have no power other than to recommend, and they lean to the staff to look for guidance. When an applicant asks for a deferral, they then have to wait a couple of weeks until they reach the council to have that deferral confirmed.
Right.
In a text amendment, we would like to propose to you that the deferral that is being sought to the body for which it first receives and acts, that's where the deferral should rest. It shouldn't go beyond to ask for permission further, because it really does delay the process, and more importantly, it really doesn't give a level of predictability to the community. When's this really going to come back? Because nobody knows, and just in case in point, with Councilman Iron saying, well, it should have been 90 days, and all of a sudden, planning commission is left out, the planning director who's already moving the project forward to a date to ready it for that date, plus the community, if the applicant's reaching out for a community meeting.
Any thoughts on what you're saying?
Just to give you a heads up, that's going to be in the list, if you will.
But I think that's, DeKalb often does a, what they call a full cycle deferral at the planning commission level, and then kicks it out, you know, to the next one. And I think that similar thing happened, because I don't think it goes to the board of commissioners if it gets a full cycle deferral at the planning commission.
And that may be exactly how they practice it.
In case of that, yeah.
Right, but what we have found is the ordinance that we've adopted, that we are enacting and implementing the code as it's written, and we have found in other instances related to our building code, that the county is not adhering to their own code. So there's a practice in the development community of understanding, well, we don't look at that, but now the City of Brookhaven is. So there's a list of some cleanup that we would like to present to you all, and this is going to be a part of it. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, and this is a perfect example of what that does.
Good.
All right, thank you so much. So tonight, does this mean that we won't have a public hearing on this case? Right, Susan, but...
Hold on. There will be a request for a deferral.
Would people still make comments about it?
I think that you can make the statement that you're considering deferral, and that there's really no plan for there to be comments on, because the plan is...
I know, if people are going to want to make comments, they'll have a chance to do it.
But they'll be making comments off of a plan that really is no longer going to exist.
Yeah, similar to what was last night.
Correct.
There were probably people who couldn't make it last night.
Yeah.
And I think that's the way to induce it, is the old plan has been scrapped.
Right.
New plan has not yet been presented, so we have, we're going to defer it, and let them come back and comment on the new, on the new plan.
You, Bates, you could introduce that.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, just to recommend the deferral of this planning?
So there's been no plan submitted to the city or the staff?
Yeah.
May 31st is when it's expected, that's the first thing.
It'll be recommended, recommend deferral to a date certain, to the July 3rd planning commission hearing. To a date certain.
This is new business one.
July 3rd planning commission hearing, July 11th is mayor and council hearing, and July 23rd is mayor and council hearing.
You have to hear it twice?
Yes, until you amend your ordinance that says it's...
July 3rd, mayor and council.
July 3rd, planning commission.
July 11th, mayor and council.
First read, July 11th, second read, July 23rd.
July 9th. 9th and 23rd.
There must be a typo in our calendar.
9th and 23rd. Yeah, that makes sense, that's 14 days. 11th will be 9, 12 days.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to do that, and then explain it in the part of the discussion.
Yeah, I'll just say, the plan, there's been no plan accepted by the city or submitted by the developer to the city, that will be on May 31st. So the planning commission or the city has no plan to review at this point. There will be a deferral hearing on the 3rd of July, and then it will go before us, we're on the 9th and the 23rd for a first and second read.
Right.
So that'll be plenty of time during all that period, they can read about it, find out about it after they get the plan, and meet the staff, call up here.
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion, and then when we have the discussion, I'll...
Number two, what's this one?
Number two is a charter amendment.
It was just a charter amendment to change the reads ordinances.
Oh, yeah. We talked about this.
And this particular deferral may be captured in that.
Anybody have any questions about that? We've talked about this, going from the two to one.
Remind me, getting two to one?
Two reads, two reads.
And that for all ordinances?
For all.
Was this the first read on it?
Yeah. I think we're having second reads in second part of May and first part of June.
All right, this third one is...
Is your alcohol ordinance change, this is a first read, hours of operation?
I want to, I want to hear more from the restaurant, Marrow Community, Brookhaven, before, a little bit more before we vote on this.
So... Well, this is a first read, there's no action required on the first read, so we still would have time. Let's go ahead and do the first read, and then we'll have two weeks. Exactly. I think it would be helpful to put it out there what we're suggesting to change.
I do, can we make some changes before we consider tonight? Are there any...
You can do that at your second read, in your motion to approve with the following changes.
New Year's Eve, longer time, or Saturday?
Were these your concern there?
Well, I've spoken to some businesses in the community, and there are some concerns.
Like the holiday issue, is that what it is?
We can put that on the website, we'll work through communications to get that word out.
Yeah, I wanted to get to, we can just send something to all the places that serve alcohol. I looked at most of the hours.
We can go through finance, since they issue the licenses, and Megan and Bonnie can work together on that.
I'll hear from the community as well on that.
That's what I think we should put it on the website, wherever you have it, but we'll also make sure we get it to the license holders.
Before we do, there's some housekeeping things that I think we need to change in here.
Well, this is, we can do it on the second read, right?
Yes.
But are we going to put this out as what we're proposing, between now and the second read?
What page are you on?
I'm just looking at what was given to us in the package. Section 1, 4-128, the 50% number...
Oh, yeah.
Does not match the 60% number that's found elsewhere in the base ordinance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Arroyo.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 1 of 3 of the ordinance as proposed, section 1, section...
Section 1?
That's wrong. 4-128, Sunday sales A, it shows it is 50%. Elsewhere in the base ordinance, Sunday sales is 60%. So we need to pick a number and figure out which one it is.
Section, you're talking about 4-128 and 4-149?
Yeah, 4-149 in the base ordinance has 60%. And it is the same in private club, private clubs, it's all, Sunday sales in private clubs, it's also 60%. So we're, let's pick, what number should it be, 50 or 60? Also, we've changed hours for beer and wine, but we haven't changed hours for distilled spirits, which are included in section 4-126 of the base ordinance. We changed hours for 4-147, 4-149, but we don't change hours for 4-126, which is distilled spirits.
Ask this, where do we get these, legal counsel, we get these? Want to make sure, because we've had a couple instances like this, we got to make sure that before we even submit this stuff to council for work session, that we review this kind of, these kind of inconsistencies that a non-lawyer is picking up.
Come on, that played on the TV.
We got to make sure we do that.
Yeah, these damn non-lawyers are just getting away. I think we also need to include an hour, an hour of closing in the ancillary tasting section. I don't know that it's specifically tied back to a closing hour.
It always is, they don't have a separate closing hour. You can't taste outside of the currently existing.
It doesn't say that in the ordinance, at least not that I saw, I may be a non-lawyer, didn't pick up on that, but...
It's an ancillary license, which means it's...
Follows the hours.
Follows the hours of your registration.
60% is under twice, 50% is in the first time.
Yeah, for Sunday sales, right.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd rather do two reads of the standard, you know, with all the clarifications.
Well, I mean...
The notes that you've given us, we'll work on that, and then in the meantime...
Before we publish it?
Yes, in the meantime, however, we'll make sure communications is working with Bonnie's staff on identifying all those who hold such a license, and then we'll communicate that to the public as well through the website, and like the E News Blast, and to try and solicit any kind of comment or review from the public.
And that'd give a total of 30 days?
So are you looking to defer it for 30 days before it comes back, or are you looking for another two weeks? Okay, so May 28th.
You'll have directions to whether you want 50 or 60%, so we can have that for the following...
So this is, the 50% rule is, if you derive 50% yourself from food, or is it food and alcohol?
50% food, and the other ones are 60% food.
Yeah, but does that have to do with whether you get an alcohol license?
Sunday sales.
For Sunday sales, so I think 50% is 11.
It's not just Sunday sales, if anyone...
I changed the 60 to 50.
You want all of them?
Yeah.
Maybe that's a good question to ask, and also we're trying to...
Well, I'm dealt with that, and I think it's 50% is a little more reasonable.
I can choose that to 60.
So change 60 to 50? Okay.
Do we also, in some sections, we have, for the 50, for the 50 slash 60, we have a, we have a reporting standard in some sections, and we don't in others, and for general sales, they sign an affidavit for a business license for private clubs and whatever, other, they're required to provide an annual report. And it's sort of vague as to whether it's an audited report, but do we want to be consistent with our requirements for one versus the other?
Or do they have to audit or not?
Whether they have to provide a report or not, you know, one section, it just says they have to sign an affidavit saying that their, that their sales are 50/50 or 60/60, and another section that says they have to provide a report spelling out their sales to verify that they're...
Do you have a preference?
I guess I'm asking council...
That would be something I would want to know from the...
The license holders.
I've heard that most can track it, you know, because I mean, their software that they use to track, it's available, they can provide a recording.
Hot Sauce, that software, yeah.
Yeah, there's several, but anyway, so...
Well, does the state track the alcohol sales for these establishments in a separate report?
Yes, the licensees, there are some licensee that are required to submit reports directly to the state.
Just liquor, or is it...
No, no, wholesalers are required to submit directly to the state.
But this would really just follow retails. So retail, there's no, there's no other agency that's monitoring the amount of alcohol sold?
Well, I mean, DOR still gives them a license, it's just the percentage, that's a local regulation. State doesn't really care one way or the other, you know.
I'm simply trying, what I'm trying to get at is if there is another agency that makes them report the amount of alcohol sales that they have, then that's a way that they, you know, it's no extra work for them to submit that.
Wholesalers pay excess taxes to the state, so they have to report to the state how much alcohol they sell.
How much food?
No.
So there's nobody selling how much food, so we're going to figure out the base.
No, that's local only regulations, state doesn't have regulations over what your percentage of food requirement is to get a license. In some cities, you know, you can have bars that...
Sure, but my question is, for restaurants, is there any reporting requirement for the amount of alcohol that they sell?
No, not to the state, it would be to us if we wanted it.
How do other jurisdictions do this? I mean, this is a typical requirement.
I've heard some do it the strict way, some don't do it that strict way.
Some jurisdictions have a monthly, a reporting requirement, that you submit a, basically a one-page breakdown of your alcohol sales versus your food sales, along with your taxes, they require you to submit taxes on a monthly basis.
What I'm used to seeing is that annual report, it's not audited, but it's normally signed by CPA, saying this is the percentage of the amount of alcohol, and they need to have about what they need to license.
And that's how we get through that, all right. That's what we need.
So we include that for your round, okay.
Is that, is that included now in our ordinance for license renewal?
Is that required in our license renewal?
I just have to check out.
In the alcohol sales, it is in one section and not in another.
It's just for Sunday sales?
Yeah, yeah. For private clubs, it's required, for general business, it's not, we have, for some reason, we have, everybody's in the daze on these types of sections. And that's what I, that's what brought it up, is if there is a reporting requirement, then we need to be consistent between the two.
Yeah, so you're saying if an establishment is looking for Sunday sales, there's reporting requirement, but there's no reporting requirement if they're not looking for...
No, for a general restaurant, the way I read it, again, I'm a non-attorney, but the way I read it...
I know.
The way I read it is, for Sunday sales for a general restaurant, is general reporting, Sunday sales for a private club, which is defined otherwise separately, they're required to provide a report, I think similar to what Bonnie mentioned, you know, the annual report signed by the... So in other words...
We want to have the annual report requirement consistent throughout this alcohol business.
I think that that's a good idea, as long as we're not creating undue burden on the restaurants, because...
If you take a look at section 4-75, that requires a middle of the year in taxes and alcohol sales, requires certain things, contents of returns.
4-75?
4-75C.
Do we have that in front of us?
No, we didn't change that section. I'll read it to you, it says, "All returns will show the gross receipts from the sale of alcohol beverages by the drinker when a tax collector authorized due for a later period, and such other information is made be required by the finance department." So we do have a requirement, there's a general requirement for everyone submitting taxes to us for alcohol sales by the drinker at each and every year. It's already in there, it's just in a section apart.
So should it be here too?
It doesn't have to be in each individual section, it's why it's in the general section.
But there's something different in it.
I was going to say, that's general sales, seven days a week, this section deals specifically with Sunday sales, no, specifically with Sunday sales, 50/50. There's no requirement in what you read to break out of Sunday sales, and again, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, yeah, let's just be consistent, let's just put the reporting requirement in all Sunday sales.
All the reasons not to.
You're saying... Jim, you're really saying, put the same reporting requirement in all sales, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
No, no, it's only for Sunday sales, it's justified that they've got the, they're hitting that 50/50 mark.
Hold on, it's in every, for example, section 4-128B, see, I included only A because we were changing only parts of A. It's, it's, hold on, it's in every, for example, section four dash one twenty-eight B, see, I included only A because we were changing only parts of A. But there's B and C and D, and it talks about complete affidavit issued by the finance department.
Right.
Take an audit.
Those are the requirements for what your report has to...
Yeah, every, every one of these Sunday sales sections, there's, there's a B on, on four dash one twenty-eight, for example, it requires that same affidavit. It's just, it, it wasn't being changed, so it wasn't included in the ordinance. But it is in the chapter four dash one twenty-eight B, for example, for the first section. I can look at four dash one forty-seven.
No.
Four dash one forty-nine B has the same requirement.
Look at, look at one sixty, four dash one sixty-two, which is a private club, that's where it's specifically called.
Again, it may, it may be the way it's written, and for the private clubs, it's in that particular section, we're changing, so again...
Let's just be consistent throughout.
It is in there.
Let's just be consistent throughout. Alright.
So let me, let me just clarify, the main change we're asking for is...
Fifty, make everything fifty percent rather than sixty, we take out the...
No, but the main change is the closing hours, isn't it?
Well, that's not what we've been discussing, but...
I know, I'm, I'm just going back to...
That's, that's correct, that's what the purpose of this is.
I mean, a lot of people here are going to know what we're doing.
The purpose is this change of the closing hours from, was it four o'clock in the morning, to possibly one fifty-five, last call, two thirty, two twenty-five, finish your drink at lunch, from the last call, close at three, rather than last call at two fifty-five, three thirty, close at four.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're doing. So we want to get a little feedback from the industry and from residents on, on that. And this was initiated by some residents who have had issues with late night clubs.
One final, again, I'm getting particular, but if we're going to put it out on the website.
I'm gonna put me first, I guess.
That should be, see here, we say, sales and deliveries, that should be the beginning of a new paragraph. It looks like it's tied to just Sunday, all of this is just happening on Sunday.
Oh.
Whereas before, it should, it should be A, B, and C, that, that's a new paragraph under, that ties it all.
Should be B?
No, see here, you got A, B, and C, and then you've got a new paragraph, right, sales and delivery, blah, blah, blah. Here you got A, B, and C.
I got this part of C.
Yeah, it should be, it should be, yeah.
It's kind of a cut and paste error on what section is that? One forty, four, one forty-seven, the paragraph under C, after the, after the second line, first word of the second line, four, one forty-nine, started with sales, that should be a new paragraph, because it's a new paragraph on the other ordinance, they have the same language.
And it deals with A, B, and C, not just C.
Right, right. So it shouldn't be a part of C, it should be its own paragraph.
Right, I see that.
You got that, Jamie?
Yes.
Alright.
Sorry.
No, Paul, Doug, and Eric.
Good, thank you.
Just a general comment, if we, in the future, when we adopt an ordinance, if you can keep it all together, and keep all those A, B, and C's in there, so that we don't, I think that is confusing.
That's fine, usually, I can do whatever you'd like, usually it was practice, just to put in the things that change, and just to keep the ordinance from being crowded, made as long as I like.
I'm, I'm not sure they have the whole ones with a highlight, or...
Track changes, track changes, redlining.
Boldface the changes for you.
Or something.
They actually were redlining, I'm not sure how they feel about that, not, not that...
Yeah, redlining always too pretty high.
It was submitted as a...
Four o'clock later, or, you know, three fifty five, it's not okay.
Now, where, where's my...
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is item number four underneath business, which is a resolution to abandon the right-of-way property located on landlot two thirty-seven, eighteen, District, DeKalb County, this is the Alta Vista abandonment, Richard has been working on that.
Yeah, this is a request from Haven Real Estate, they are, they have a contract on the adjacent lots, and they want to, um, they are asking the city to abandon about point one five two acre area of right-of-way that's shown in the packet, there's a survey that shows what the shape is. It's basically, the request would, although they have not submitted a formal plan to community development, it's to make the, a lot buildable, a single buildable lot for them, to be able to build, understanding is, well, it's three lots, but they combined, they would, their intent, I believe, that they've stated in their letter, is to combine those three lots and this right-of-way abandonment into a single lot for a sing, one house, is what they're proposing.
But keep in mind, the abandonment is going to the property owner.
The abandonment will go to the property owner of record.
Appraised for?
Yes. Yes, they would pay the appraised value, which I believe, twenty, a little over twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, they, they had, they had appraisal done by...
Right, we required that.
A duty of care appraisal. The, what they've done is they found that Alta Vista is not developed, it's vacant property from, from basically this line until the end. So the three lots, because of floodplain and because of, um, stream buffer, are not developable.
So by, Richard?
Yes, those three right there, so by, by adding this piece to it, it gives them enough room to build a house on.
Eric, this is, this is also a small version of this, it's in the packets, but this is the Alta Vista right-of-way, there is no, the road right now comes and goes this way. There is, yeah, that's the road itself. This is a strip of land that's dedicated as right-of-way, but there is no roadway in there.
Where are these lot, are these houses on these?
There's nothing on these lots, there...
It is not buildable either?
Um...
You can, if you can go to a road, then you can go on.
The potential, there's flood, there's stream buffer issues with those lots. You also have this lot here, which is access, this is the area that they're asking for abandonment. With abandon, if we abandon this, if it's granted, they still have, the city still has the ability to, at some future date, to build the road if they so choose.
So it's a bit of driveways, basically?
Um, yeah, actually, I believe they're going to combine this into one lot, for one home. At least that's what they've shown, indicated to us, they have, but they have not submitted a formal plan of, for a house that they will, will still have to do to community development once all this is settled. And this is a, there will be a public hearing on it tonight where people can speak.
Have you been contacted from another party?
Yeah, several of the property owners I know, the, this property owner who owns these lots, this property owner here, and I believe these two here have, and they expect them possibly to be here and comment, their main concern was, they want to be sure that they still, there's still public access, that we're not cutting off their lots from potential public access.
They're not necessarily opposed to it as long as...
Um, no, I mean, there's some concern maybe from the woman that lives here about another home in the neighborhood.
That's a bad thing, having another home.
Yeah, I'm, you know, she was...
I want that.
Got to have a neighbor.
Yeah, so she was concerned about someone building, there was, you know, making sure, they did comment that this is down in a hole with stream buffer and floodplain, to make sure that it's an opportunity, whatever they build, if they propose a home with it here, that's really a community development issue, once they submit a plan to adhere to that.
No, I mean, I, I've talked to a couple of neighbors, I've talked to the one directly across, the one that's the first house down the street. I think that it's an opportunity to, to sell some unnecessary right-of-way and create a development opportunity, you know, combine three lots that are completely worthless right now, into one, and, and put a, put a single house on them.
I do say, I will say that these, the people that own these lots back here, their question to us was, well, what is the city's plan for that in the future? I've told them, we don't have one yet, it's too early for us, but we are, you know, we would be at some future date willing to talk with them about different issues regarding those lots, but we don't have any plans of yet.
Are those all buildable lots?
The low side, probably not.
These, these four right here, probably not, and much of this lot, not, this, this lot has a house on it that faces Dresden. This is probably buildable, um, this property owner owns both, both lots.
And if you ever, if you ever drive by there, his garden sits squarely on the right of the way.
Yes, yes.
It almost looks like it was graded at some point for the road.
And she, she has asked, and it's potential, it's not really, um, regarding this one, but she has made requests in the past about, to DeKalb County about abandoning that section of right-of-way to her, she may come in in the future and apply, that's her prerogative.
If we want a right-of-way, we can talk to a contractor.
So.
Anyway, yeah, so if you ever go by there, there's a, there's a perfect, their garden is, is sitting square in the middle of the road, so that's your reference point.
Yes.
So if she comes and screaming about it, we know what the purpose is. But then, as far as extending the road, there's really been a recent, we've got grants, or, or, excuse me, Thompson just up the way. Also, this is, there's some sight distance issues, if you stand there and say...
Yeah, I would, you know, the little I've looked at it, I would not see a traffic need for extending that road. From a development need, that's another issue that a developer would maybe want to do it at some future date, but there's no traffic need for extending that.
Have you heard from Berkle? Number five?
Number five is the resolution for the assessment of the annual cost of the traffic calming measures. We talked with you about this at the last work session, and this is the resolution that creates that and addresses that.
There's a, I'm sorry, there's a typo in that one.
Okay, where is it?
I'm trying to find it, last, very last line, K five, um, total, amount to total street light assessment. We have cut and paste, I was looking at K five A, very last line, um, we've got street lights being assessed, and, anyway.
I'm sorry, the last line under action?
No, I'm sorry, I'm on K five A.
Okay, I'm there.
Page one twenty, the, the, yeah, the memo, the very last line.
One twenty?
I'm sorry, yeah.
I showed that on one twenty-five.
What page, I'm sorry, this is the memo, the very last line, okay. I guess I have, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the very last line, it's the memo.
You're on K six.
K six?
I'm on K five A.
Okay, where, okay.
The very last line, it says amount for, for total street side, street light assessment. A more accurate amount to the total street light assessment, and we're probably being... But this is the traffic calming resolution, I'm sorry, it's a...
Last, on page one twenty-four.
Are you on the memo, or are you in the resolution?
I'm on the memo, I'm sorry, I'm on the memo, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm on the memo.
You get to it in a week.
Now read, was we on?
That's what happened, I tried to read them online, I was trying to work them out, but anyway, that's fine, it's in the memo, not the, not the resolution.
Okay.
Oh, I see, yeah.
This was, this is, it's just the memo on traffic calming.
The long mic cover memo.
Has a, a typo about, um, street lights.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's all, that's all it is. This is traffic calming.
It's traffic calming, my fault.
It's not the ordinance.
My fault.
I, I did, I did have a question on that, you talk about, um, you did talk about forty cents per frontage foot equals the lowest rate paid in any establishment.
You're on K six nine.
Street light, okay, never mind.
I was telling...
Never mind.
This is the same fee that DeKalb County has been charging, is this twenty-five dollars per household of these people on these streets?
Twenty-five dollars per, yeah, per property, per parcel.
Per year.
Per year.
And this is what, on five or six, you're talking about?
You're talking about traffic calming.
Traffic calming.
Alright, yeah, five, okay.
It's, yes, the fee is twenty-five dollars per parcel, per year, for the streets listed, and in some cases, this is, the backup of this is, is actual maps, and these people have been paying the fee, we're not adding this to any extensions of these streets. Although, if there are lots that have been subdivided, those lots will have to pay a fee on it, but...
To maintain the traffic calming, so it's islands and tables involved?
Yes, yes.
Don't mind.
Do we have any islands?
We have islands, yes, West Nancy Creek, Caldwell Road, there's a few others, East Nancy Creek has some.
Does this mean we're open for business for traffic calmers, for kind of boards?
Um, we are, well, we've already passed the ordinance for that, and we have had, we've received and are reviewing one petition on Kendrick Road responding what they have traffic calming, we have, um...
He's asking whether there are islands.
We would still have to do the study, we're not, we've received the initial petition, we're checking the petition to see if they met the twenty percent threshold for us to undertake the studies, um, and then we would have to undertake the studies before they vote on any changes.
Kendrick?
Kendrick, it's a road that has speed humps on it, that they're looking to do some other measures potentially. They want us to relook at it, because they still have concerns about volumes.
Does this money go into a walled-off fund of some sort, or a line item fund?
No, it's, right now, it goes into the general fund, and it's used to offset just the maintenance, you know, right now, it goes into the general fund. We use it in the general fund maintenance budget, to offset the general fund maintenance, but one of the obligations is if there's speed humps that have to be replaced, signs that have to be replaced, we do that under our general fund maintenance, and so it's just, we're not tracking.
Would there be a policy reason? I mean, it sounds good to wall it off, but it seems like it might... What we're trying to get away from is having everything go in the...
Right, you know, this is, that's the way to get, the reason I believe it's in our general fund is that's the way DeKalb County operated theirs. From a accounting purpose, as far as what did we collect, what did we spend, um, there would be potential reasons for walling it up. One is, you know, we may, we collect, this is anticipated to collect between fifty and fifty thou, five thousand dollars per year. This first year, we may not have that much in speed hump replacements, or in traffic calming installation, but having it as a separate fund would, depending on how you legally set that up...
It may show that fees too high.
It may show that fees too high for maintenance, but it also would set a separate fund of doing, of, of tracking it. Sometimes, a lot of times with the maintenance, it's the twenty-five dollar a year, but then you may end up having, it may be, once every so many years, you actually have to tap it, but when you have to tap into that, um, it may be a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars for that year's repairs, and that's why it's good to wall it off.
Why is there, do you have any policy reason against walling it off?
Um, other than, like you said, if you get to a point where you need repairs, that you just don't stop it, it's in the balance, and that account, probably wouldn't be...
Well, we would know about it, then.
I would, I would say, rather than bind our hands to the walling off, I'm going to say accounting of it, a proper accounting of it is, I think, a better strategy, of course, because we're not tied to use of funds to do some other kind of traffic calming thing. But I think that the ultimate idea is, are we taking up an up end, and seeing over time, over time, as it is that, you know, as long as we can account for it, that's the most...
And it may take a couple of years to really understand what we're spending on it, but the issue's going to come when we start doing resurfacing in the second, third, in the year beyond, because that's where the money's going to be needed, because if we resurface a road that has some humps, we're going to have to spend money to tear out the humps, and then resurface the road, and then put back the humps afterwards, that's where we're going to end up spending the money.
One question about that, because the county had always said, when you have the traffic islands, they couldn't dig down into the pavement, so you couldn't plant nice trees, there's always dirt sitting on top of the pavement. So when we go to repave, and we're taking these islands out, can we have a, have neighborhood input on what they, what they want in their island, and can we make sure we don't, aren't so...
Well, the islands, we wouldn't take out the islands for repave, and they can repave around the islands, it's the humps that we would have to take out.
New islands, can we?
New islands, yes, we would, and, you know, I'm one, I'm flexible with it, and a lot of it is, on traffic calming, is listen to what the neighbors want. And there's some people that like the islands, some people that like the humps, I think islands can be very effective, and a lot be more prettier than humps, but at the same, and they can provide planting areas, as long as they're maintained, and someone's able to maintain them, that's a big thing with islands.
Richard, let me ask you two questions.
Yes.
Did the laser truck take any of this into account, when it did a road survey?
Um, as far as the humps themselves, no, I mean, they had to, that didn't affect the rating of the road, I mean, they were going by the pavement.
No, I mean, I'm looking at an exposure situation.
Exposure?
You know, you, no, the laser truck went out and prioritized what roads we'd take care of first. So if we know what roads are, and we know where the humps are, and we know what the prioritization is, we can pretty much estimate where we're going to be going.
We're going through that process right now, and that's one of the factors that's coming in, is we're kind of pulling all this data together. When we give an estimate for, as we're pulling all the estimates together for the different roads, if it's a road that has speed humps on it, we're factoring that into the cost estimate of that.
Two points that I want to make on, on that, remember, the laser truck was to assess the conditions of all the city's assets, the roads. And after that assessment, it would be determined through public works, what their suggested priority would be, given, again, the conditions of, of those assets. But before we move forward with that, that is going to be presented to you all, so that you have an understanding of what is being recommended, and that you are adopting that. That's point number one. Point number two, on, in these traffic circles where there are trees, we definitely want community input, but let's not forget that when we launch the comprehensive plan, we're going to have a transportation plan, and we're going to have a recreation plan. Talking about identifying the districts, and having some landmarks that identify the districts as it does the entire city. So we're going to be talking about trees, like which specific trees and landscaping components, and even get into the design aspects of signage for different districts, and what really sets the demarcation line for them, so we're going to be coming back, because we'll have that community input, and we'll really be engaged with the community.
Be patient.
Please.
Gotcha. We want to change things right now.
And just to the point, we heard from a citizen last night, and if you'll allow me, just to take one more point at this, we heard from a citizen last night that they had an interest in planting trees along Peachtree Road, from, I believe it was Oz, the Waffle House, all the way to the DeKalb Services Center. And I think that is commendable, but... And I think that is commendable, but we need to be sure we identify and understand what those trees are and they fit within the overall city plan and, most important, they can be maintained, because they will be in the city rights of way and ultimately, we're liable, we're responsible and, so I didn't wanna get ahead of ourselves, because I know each of the council members have talked with me about certain.
That's Jim's friend.
I know it is. And he's become my friend, so I just, I appreciate the willingness, but we, we really don't need to have it haphazard, it really needs to be part of the plan and ultimately, the mayor and council will make that decision.
And I would hope at that point, we could have a, maybe a, open a discussion for relooking at the designs of the traffic islands.
Yes.
I've always admired some of them in Fulton County that are all uniform and I think the county maintains them and, um, I, I know that on my streets, it's up to whoever has that house and it's, it's all over the, you know.
Exactly.
Some get overgrown and some get weak.
And part of the, the transportation plan, you know, will be looking at connectivity of roadways and what means, what's the capacity of these thorough, through lanes and et cetera, but there needs to be a component in there for traffic calming and graphic design as to how that plays into these character areas in the city, so that there is a, an understanding upfront, so you're not negotiating from the podium, he's not trying to, um, negotiate with neighbors that want this or that. They certainly need to be engaged, but we'll have a process and a venue for that when we develop a comprehensive plan and it will be a chapter in his transportation study.
And from that also, I would recommend, as we get through the comprehensive transportation plan, what we address with traffic calming, we would go back and then amend our ordinance to be consistent with that, whatever we do with the traffic calming.
Right, and there's just so many moving parts and then we talk about cost and maintenance and that includes Ms. Klein, so we've gotta be sure we're.
I just wanna clarify one other point that I, I've actually already talked to Richard a little bit about, I, I noticed that two of these streets on this list are on Westbrook, which has its own private streets, but do I understand that they were part of the original vote for the traffic calming on Old Johnson Ferry? So those houses that backed up to Old Johnson Ferry are assessed?
Right, what this is, the way, DeKalb, this goes back to the way DeKalb County determined the districts. When they were putting on traffic calming in Old Johnson's Ferry Road, when they determined what a district boundary is, they, they asked for vote and this fee from everybody that's affected by those devices. Those people that live on Westbrook, their only means of ingress and egress is through Old Johnson's Ferry, so they have no choice but to go over the speed humps. They had a vote and a say in putting them in, the way DeKalb County ran it, they also have a, they also pay for, help pay for the maintenance of Old Johnson's Ferry. I will say, based on the maps and the information that DeKalb County provided, me, specifically with Westbrook, I believe it was somewhere around seventy percent of the residents of Westbrook voted in favor of the speed humps at Johnson's Ferry, knowing that they would be paying this fee. So it's not something, they had a say in the district, they had a vote in the district, and a majority of them agreed to pay.
And they've been billed, they've been getting billed.
And they've billed, they've billed in the past, yes.
I'm just, I'm surprised, because my neighborhood backs up as well and it's the only ingress and egress and we never voted and we don't pay.
There is, and I believe.
I think they're in exit out from Westbrook, actually is right near one of the islands.
Right, right.
Well, they have, you don't have an island near Berwick, do you?
We have, we have two speed humps either way.
Oh, you have, they have islands, I thought, maybe it's Old John.
Old Johnson Ferry.
Has islands.
Up by Westbrook has the speed bumps, the speed humps, the speed tables.
Sometimes going back, why DeKalb included Westbrook and didn't include Berwick.
All right, we won't go back over that.
Maybe some power over there, got Berwick out of there.
But, but, but I think the point that, that Richard made is that if it's their only means of ingress and egress, then they're included in the district and.
Well, if there's a history that they voted for, they've been paying for, let's just continue, at some point you might wanna relook.
Right, and all these, all these streets that are listed here and all the maps, I have all the backup maps that show the districts, um, if, I didn't include them in the pack because it was too many to print, but, um, all these roads have voted and have paid in the past.
All right, we gotta move on, we gotta move on. All right, uh, street number six?
Yes, number six, we talked with you about this at the last work session and that is dealing with, um, the street light assessment. And if you'll look at the highlighted section, you know, this, remember the map that Richard shared with you all as to who was in the street light assessment, um, districts in the city, which predominantly are residential, however, there are some commercial properties that are paying. The PCID that is inside Brookhaven is paying into the street light, um, assessment and that is, that is collected annually. The highlighted section here is, we wanted to create a level playing field, we talked with you about that at the last work session, whereby we would capture all of the commercial properties, however, we wanted to have some, um, lead-in time in order to do that. We didn't wanna do it for this year, but we did wanna give notice to all the commercial properties that beginning in two thousand fourteen, they will be included. Um, and this is time sensitive, because we have to notify the tax commissioner's office that, you know, they need to collect for us, we've already notified, um, the public works department, so they're already on ready that, you know, we are taking all of this over, um, but we do need to give final notice to the county.
So if I understand this, we're setting at forty cents a, a front foot for fourteen and then subsequent years is based on a, on, that, that rate flows based on, on the.
Collection amount, correct, and, and the, the goal is here, which we've talked about before, but I think it, it deserves being mentioned again, the goal here is as we get everybody at the same level of being included, that we hope those rates are gonna go down and they should be, because right now your residents have been carrying it for the entire, um, city and, and the community when it was unincorporated.
And that, and that really is just based on our total electric bill to Georgia Power is, is what, okay. All right, so, so that's the goal, it's, it's a net, it's a net zero, um, fee.
All the energy costs, you know, we wanna be sure that that is covered, that's first and foremost. Then we want to look at the collection amount, because if there are dark spots whereby we can take any additional funds that are collected to go back in and light those up, that's number one, we wanna look at that. And secondly, again, as we are setting these design standards for gateways into the city, as we identify those for the comprehensive plan, we'll come up with what that signature light fixture looks like, so we may be going back and replacing lights, so we want to be able to have a fund, funding source that does that.
Yeah, and along those same lines, I think, you know, LED, some of the other.
I know Sandy Springs has done that, um, we've talked with them about it, Richard's.
I guess that's part of the comprehensive plan.
Right, exactly, we'll look at that and, and, you know, we are gonna be a volume customer to Georgia Power, I expect that we get the benefit of that, because the bill comes to us, it is being collected and assessed to your property owners, but there should be some benefits to that. Major corporations get it, industrial parks get it, and so should the municipalities.
Can we take advantage of the, of the territorial rights where if it's Rover seven, seven fifty, I think it's seven fifty, KVA, we can compete?
Well, have to look into that.
And we gotta, we gotta move on.
But like you said, I mean, you know, top of things.
Right, absolutely, that's all that's on your, um.
We have the flood insurance.
Oh, yes, excuse me. All right, who's that?
Resolution of joint flood insurance program.
I'll start and then have Richard chime in.
And I've heard, we got several things we gotta do before the, we got executive session, we gotta deal with the work session.
Three seconds and then six seconds. Flood insurance, uh, program resolution is so that we will then receive the flood insurance rate maps from FEMA, which delineate flood, flood hazard areas to help protect property values, people and pass along the insurance.
Does it cost the city?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yep, uh, so people can, can get flood insurance.
Oh, God, we have to.
Who's against flood insurance? All right, that's, other business, Ohio, Mayor Thompson, all right, Scott's not here, still?
He'll be here soon.
All right, um, oh, it's seven, oh, I thought you said seven minutes.
Seven, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, oh.
Okay, well, then we can go to the next part on the session agenda.
Okay. Uh, we were, we were on, uh, we have an upcoming, uh, intergovernmental agreements update.
Okay, tomorrow, um, we are, city attorney and myself, along with our police chief and his deputy, are going to the county to discuss police. And second to that, on the agenda will be parks and recreation, and we'll be coming back to report to you. Stormwater utility update, Richard and I have been working on this, I've notified the county that we're going to take it over. Right now, we're still waiting, the county was supposed to have it on their May twenty-eighth agenda to increase the rate, we wanna.
Probably fifteen.
They defer, they, we thought they were gonna put it on today's agenda, but the latest we got is they put it on the twenty-eighth agenda.
Okay.
Um, it is our intention to match what the county is there. All right, um, Susan, on the text amendment for Z two one three dash zero two.
Very quickly, the legal ad has been sent to the paper, the ad will get the paper on Thursday. I have drafted a, the text amendment that will be ready for public view, which will be seen by the planning commission on June fifth and council on this June fifteenth and June twenty-fifth, which is coincident with the date of the lifting of the moratorium. The text amendment includes, um, a new definition for height, which then ties into threshold, also a definition of story, identifies parking for restaurants, including, um, outdoor seating areas. There's also provisions in the, the text amendment for sidewalk signs, I can give you more information on that if you want. And then I also put a clarifying sentence in the purpose and scope of the Brookhaven overlay relative to density to identify what a hump was or was not. Um, and then clearly identified when you apply the underlying versus the overlay to progress.
Those will be available when?
Um, it will be available on the sixteenth, because the ad get the paper on the sixteenth.
And that's available on the website?
Um, it will be available as soon as I get it posted after the ad hits the paper.
And what flexibility we have to change the text amendment once it's published on the sixteenth?
Um, when you have your first reading, what they say, let's see, when you have your first reading on June fifth, excuse me, on June fifteen, I'm sorry, June eleven, sorry about that, I can't read my reading. Um, that will be the first reading and that's kind of when you can kind of flush out, um, things that you might wanna see changed and you can recommend places be changed and those can be incorporated for the first reading, second reading on the twenty-fifth, and that's actually the same night that the moratorium will be lifted.
And when will the, will we have a public hearing on the, on the eleventh or the twenty-fifth?
On the eleventh.
For the, for the mayor and council public hearing, okay.
Right.
All right.
Okay, um, other agenda items that we wanted to make you aware of, Chief Endura is going to give you an update, I keep telling him, and I've told some of you this, that his department is multiplying by the hour.
It's like grimace.
Yes. And it's all exciting news and I wanted to talk with you about, some of you had questions regarding some of the purchases, I, I did wanna remind you that, um, we are approving, I am approving purchase orders for vehicles, uh, for the, um, uh, the kits to, you know, finish out, uh, the cars, the weapons, the bullets, the vests, the uniforms. Uh, all of that is being done and that's pursuant to the approval that you gave for the budget, um, for the annual budget. So, some of those, and I just wanted to be sure we clear up any confusion that, um, any of us have, and I've checked with our finance director a couple of times, just to be sure I was still correct, and that is, when it's an approved budget item on your annual budget, the city manager has the approval to sign off on those purchase orders, because you've approved the budget. When it comes to contracts, that's where the limitation is, where you all instituted that limitation back in January and that was a ten thousand dollar threshold. The manager has approval to engage in a contract, an agreement up to ten thousand dollars, anything above that has to come before the mayor and council for approval. Now, one other sub note to that, um, remember, there were a number of contracts that you awarded to the vendors when we were starting up the city. Where you have approved, uh, a contract, then you allowed me to go into negotiations for the task orders, so we are doing that, uh, on one of the contracts, we're gonna be notifying, many of you know, uh, who that is, we'll be coming back to this inclusive inspections. So, that contract with that firm was approved and now the task order and the agreement for those specific services have been negotiated and ready to sign and, Mr. Mayor, you will be signing off on that as well as the task order. And once that is done, um, you know, council will be notified and this is all with the Hoover Howland improvement district and, and it ties right back to your apartment, uh, inspections ordinance.
What is that, DeKalb money coming?
DeKalb money is coming, um, we're expecting that we will have notification probably later in May, Louz Barreros, who is the COO.
I wanna see her.
And you are, and I have a note for you on that, a note for you to carry.
I've gotta have a bunch of stuff, I'm waiting for warning.
I'm working on that and we're gonna have that.
Seven o'clock.
Have you all noticed the times that I send out email at night or early in the morning? You will be more than prepared. Uh, and I've also noted, noticed, um, many of the attendees to look out for you, Mr. Mayor. You're gonna be on the buddy system, but, um, Ms. Barreros has been working through the county attorney's office, she has to go through them, I'm expecting any day, it took her, she told me it took her three weeks just to get the appointment, the meeting. So she has had some delays, but not because there is a lack of interest. I'm working on making sure your seat assignment is next to hers on the trip out.
Clarification on the budget, so the, so the monies we're currently spending for police equipment is coming out of the lineages and police on our budget.
Correct.
So at some point, when we get police IGAs and everything else, we're gonna have to reallocate.
Exactly.
Some of the contingency backup.
Yes, there'll be a cleaning up of that and then remember, when you get ready in about six weeks to set your mileage rate, we're gonna come back and adjust your budget again. And then later in the summer, uh, probably August, and I'm still working, have to work that out with your finance director, and when we start prepping for the two thousand fourteen budget, so remember, you have free tries at, at all of this, so you'll be expert at that. Um, I wanted to give you that lead in, just to give you some understanding of, of what the authority is that, that I have, that you've allowed me to have, and then what still comes under your venue where it pertains to contracts of over ten thousand, so there's a difference. So I do want the chief to, to go over what he's been doing, a lot of exciting things and, um, the mayor and I just signed a, a letter to, um, the feds, um, hoping that we'll get a grant back on his bulletproof vest, so we're, we're looking to that for savings as well. Your finance director has been doing a great job, uh, with GMA on the capital lease program, um, we have been able to really reduce the cost, carry cost of those vehicles and, um, makes it much more affordable and we're hoping that, um, we've not taxed that budget very much, that we'll be able to see a little bit of surplus when you go back to adjust, so let me turn that over to the chief.
Okay, as the city manager said, we're actually under slow growth right now, but we are, we are hiring, there's a new sergeant started today, uh, we've got a new lieutenant starting on the twenty-eighth. Uh, so just to sum up our, our personnel right now, our supervisors, we've got three lieutenants identified, uh, we're vetting the last one and he will be hired shortly, hopefully if everything works out good. And just to give you an idea, we do neighborhood checks, we do, um, physicals, drug testing, um, we do everything possible, we go, we go to their employer and actually go through their personnel records and everything. Um, besides the three lieutenants, we have nine sergeants, we're still interviewing and we've got three, three left to fill out, out of the sergeants, the other sergeant positions are basically open, once they're, um, in place and actually, even before they're in place, um, we've got, from what I heard yesterday, we got about a thousand resumes and applications. So we're, we're vetting and we're going through those, there's some very good ones and there's some very bad ones, uh, so we're going through those, we're vetting them and, um, as we get more of the supervisor staff in place, we're gonna start divvying up the work and, and actually come up with a lot of them and you see a lot of hiring then, but we actually won't hire until, just before startup, the good thing is, most of them are employed right now, so they can get their two or three week notice. We'll go through training, so we won't have to pay them for a sit and run, nothing. So we'll take, take that into consideration. Uh, as far as vehicles, as the city manager said, they've been ordered, we ran into a little glitch on that, we've been working on, um, the Ford Motor Company, they backtracked and, um, went against what they promised us as far as the delivery date. Uh, we're getting twenty fourteen models now instead of twenty thirteen models, um, but they pushed back the production date till June third, uh, we're trying to push up where we call in that production date, so hopefully we get them in time, so we're, we're hopefully still looking at the same startup time period.
Did you get that email back there?
Actually, I, I responded back to them already with all the information we needed, so hopefully we're something there.
Okay.
The, the guns and ammo, we heard ammo was gonna be hard to get because of everything going on in the country today, uh, the guns are already here, uh, we secured them and actually received shipment on the ammo already, so we're all set to go on that. Uh, duty gear is in order, that's the holsters.
Where you gonna, I know it's not, might be secret, where you gonna keep all that stuff?
The guns and ammo are all secured and safe tonight, so, um, the duty gear, the holsters and everything, that has been ordered, um, an ID system, which we drastically need, uh, and we're gonna use that not only for employees and the police officers, we can use it for liquor licenses and things like that. IT's been doing a great job, we've been setting up, um, we've got a program that actually sets up the bond. IT's been doing a great job, we've been setting up, we've got a program that actually sets up the bonds and everything else, the design of the ID card. So, we'll be handing those out for liquor licenses, so that machine is actually going to pay for itself in the long run. Uniforms, we've got a budget and amounts for it, and what we'll be doing is, we've got sheets made up already. Uniforms will be, will be at a location, and what happens is, as we hire the officers, they go to these locations. We're going to two of them in the area that actually have good enough stock. And what we picked was the locations of the vendors that have stock currently in place. Officers go there, they get measured. The one thing we're waiting for now is our cash design that we've been working on. Soon as those come in, we'll order those, and they get sent to the uniform place. The officers, as they get hired, go there, get tailored, and they go home with the uniforms, which is real efficient. Bulletproof vests, as the city manager said, first we have to be recognized as a police department by the federal government, so we have to supply all kinds of applications and letters and things like that. And the vest, each officer has to be individually measured for that also, so we've got to get that done. Radios, the portables and mobile units. We actually met with Motorola, and that order, I believe, was placed yesterday. So, that's needed for the cars and for the officer's safety when they go out on the road.
Decide about what system we're going to be on?
Well, no matter what system, whoever we go to for dispatching will still need Motorola-type radios in that system. So, that's basically what we ordered. We know what kind of talk groups we're going to have and everything, so we can move forward with that. We're still talking with the Cat County and Chat County. So, those have been ordered.
Is there a third party we can talk to about, or those are the only two?
Those are the only two. We're finalizing, we're talking with Cat Computer-aid Dispatch and Records Management System vendor. And what we're looking at is a system that's compatible with all the surrounding jurisdictions, so we'll be coming back to you with information on that. And then, you know, finally, right after, with all that ordering taking place, the city manager said, I've been working closely with Bonnie, Bonnie's done a great job with some of the financing. I know we've got one point nine one percent financing. So, we're actually under budget as far as our initial startup cost right now, because we're actually getting prices through Motorola for the radios, and we're not sure who we're going to use yet. We're getting the different interest rates and things like that over three to five year, you know, buyout financing for the city. Motorola's supplying it, the Cat system, RMS system is providing three to five year lease agreement, and the cars along, Ford Motor Company along with GMA is providing it. The cheapest right now is GMAT, I think, one point nine one, which lowers our price drastically for initial startup cost.
When will we see a final startup budget and a three to five year sort of projection budget? When do you think you'll have enough information together that you can give us a look at what your six months and your five year plan is going to be?
Probably within a month, we're, I mean, the big cost items are out there, we could go for the cost items very quickly.
On the, for the retreat that I'm planning for you all, each department head will talk to you about a three to a five year plan as to what costs or projects that they foresee in the future.
Did Megan talk to you about retreat ideas that night?
No, not yet, was that today?
No, it was a couple of last weeks.
Oh, okay, okay, I think I know.
Is that an option?
I'm not doing PayPal.
No, no.
No. We talked about possibly holding a retreat at C Distro, but we have to talk to them about costs and see if that's feasible, if they'd be willing to work with us. Megan talked about.
Nice comfortable chairs and a movie afterwards?
Yeah, a movie at the end, work afterwards.
We have to watch all of our council meetings.
Quick question, big bullet point screen.
Just to get back to police, and this actually would probably apply across all departments, but one of the things that we've got as a new city is that, you know, usable lifespan, because we're doing these purchases all at once, we've got, you know, if the top cars make it three years, or maybe it's five years, I don't know what the useful life is, but say it's five, how do we figure out a strategy to deal with that? Five year, we don't want to have to go through the exact same thing again.
Well, plus you'd like to extend the cost over the period your business is in, your car's going to last five years, might as well pay for it and stick to people that just happen to live here right now.
And what we'll do is, yeah, through the budget process, we'll come up with a recycling, you know, a cycling program. So, for instance, computers, general lifespan's three, four years, I know that. So, we'll try replacing them at various cycles.
That's good, and if financing matches useful lifespan, then it's.
And a take home cars actually, it's proven in their studies how showing that they last a lot longer than the twenty-four hour used cars. They're better taken care of, less miles put on them because they're not driven twenty-four hours a day, so.
Well, it's typical too, when those cars come off the road, that other departments use them. They're great for, you know, planning department and for administrative staff, if they need to do it, they have a car available, so we save on mileage reimbursements, and so, you know, we do look at that as well. They can be used by the inspector.
How, is there any estimate on, you know, our city, what's up with our cars, being, how many miles you would estimate being on cars, whether you have a large jurisdiction or you're patrolling highways or?
Well, the good thing is, we don't have highways, so I would say in an average shift, just a guess at it right now, I'd say probably anywhere from twenty-four to seven mile, probably, I'm sure. It's just the best one.
It might last longer than.
In fact, that's why you may open five years, if they would not take home cars since the one in Detroit.
Oh, okay.
Another good thing, you wouldn't find it five years, you wouldn't have to make any of the next budget if it were your first year.
And that helps a lot, yeah.
It helps a lot.
Next year.
Two thousand and fourteen, first time at Dick.
And actually Motorola, if we go to Motorola, we're actually splitting up that. Motorola's giving us the first year, no cost, and they're throwing in, actually, there's a special rebate right now for used portables, and they've got a cash of used portables that they're giving us four hundred and fifty dollars credit, and I think they have fifty of them stuck. So, they're working with us too.
Were you anything else on your zip? All right, thank you. Bonnie, did you have anything else to add?
No.
All right. Well, thank you all very much, sounds like it's plugging along, keep me informed of that car order. Daniel?
The aerial imagery, that's the aerial photography that gets done every three years. So, we'll be able to provide aerial images for maps and GIS maps that we'll eventually have on the internet available to the public. The flyovers have been completed, and they're working on the orthorectification and the LiDAR data right now. The current project plan that just got updated this week has an entire project being completed at the beginning of July. And there's actually a meeting tomorrow that our GIS analysts is going to with the other north, kind of the northern cities, to look at the current LiDAR. All the cities have to come to a agreement.
What type of LiDAR is?
It's basically downward facing radar that can get different information about permeability of surfaces and things of that nature. And it's also what's used to create topo maps and brake lines, so.
So, we'll have different layers of mapping?
Yeah, it'll give us some additional information, which in the future, some additional processing can be done with that data, some planometric processing where you can use it to kind of map out how your, your water flows within the district and things of that nature. So, if we get more, the data can be used, you know, further on the future, we don't have to pay for all the planometric stuff that can be done all at once, because some of that processing is pretty expensive. But it can be used for some of our stormwater planning and land disturbance planning in the future to get the permeable surfaces in the area and other information like that. So, it's moving along, I expect that we'll, you know, as soon as we get the data, we'll have it uploaded in our system, and we are making progress as well with getting some GIS applications built. And we had our first round of beta applications just built this week that we're going to start releasing to internal staff, and then hopefully we'll release this to the public shortly after that.
What kind of applications?
Applications that will allow users to, you know, look up their zoning, district, their tax parcel information. And, you know, we'll just keep expanding it as we get data that we can load into the system.
So, residents could go to our website possibly and download this application, they could look at aerial view of their house.
Right.
Airview their block line, aerial view their zoning data, that'd be good.
Correct, it's just a web application that'll build, type in a search bar of their address or their parcel number, and pull up, you know, various different maps, either aerial photography or kind of a Google map looking map.
Have you looked at other cities and see how they're, what they're offering their citizens on that kind of thing? Are they, that's typical?
Yes, and we're.
Do you do anything advanced?
Well, we're following a data model that Esri produced for local governments, and they have pre-built apps that we can implement as well, that people will eventually be able to make available to iPads and things like that, where you can look up voting districts, schools, parks.
Any apps you've built for the city are on property, right?
Correct, and these are a lot of pre-developed apps, and we just have to populate the data into the GIS database, and then connect the apps into it.
So, is this a system that ultimately we could use to say, we want to see where we could put trails along the creeks, something, and we could look at the boundaries of the topo and?
Rideaways and water streams and?
Eventually, all those are different layers that we have to build, rideaways and things of that. Means all data that we have to get, if we don't have the data, we have to get it somewhere, buy the data or create the data ourselves.
Are we doing, as part of this current, are we, are we doing topo or just planometric?
I don't know if we'll get topo this budget year. Cost for the topo was about, I think it was about thirty-six thousand dollars.
But the aerial is sufficient to do it when the funds are available?
Yes.
So, we have the data, we should buy after all?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's kind of varying degrees of accuracy that you can get with topo data, whether you want two-foot brake lines or four-foot brake lines, and things of that, things like that affect the price and the processing, the manual processing that it takes to build that layer.
Are we requesting and requiring as-built plans in a format that can be inserted into your mapping for projects as part of the CO? They give you a disc that you then can insert, so we have up-to-date information?
We've not done that.
Yeah, typically we'd get a flat, if you are subdivided, we would get a plat that they could put into addressing purposes and whatnot.
For most anything, you know, even simple things like lots are doing there, I mean, they're doing a final as-built survey.
Yeah, the code does not require us to collect that information, or does not require applicants to submit that information to the city.
For very short.
You could require that, even administratively. Susan and I are working now on a checklist, so that could be added to that very easily.
I think we need to, because most engineers are.
It's being done anyway, right.
I mean, you know, and so long as you can give them the format, that's standard, they can, they can insert it, and then we've got, you know, we're continuously updating it as the CO enters along with you. All right, anything else, Daniel?
That's all.
Thank you very much, very informative. I was kidding last night when I said you were my interview, you know that.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, Daniel, smile.
Yes. Where are we?
We're George Power franchise, Dick. Speaking of Daniel and his department and his GIS director, Mike has just done a phenomenal job and become very close to George Power and to their data input person. And we're very close, if not there, but the turnaround has been that we've had concerns, remember, as to when the trigger date was that George Power would acknowledge all of these addresses. There was some concern over that, but that has now been rectified, and they are willing to go back to January one. And I know that council did not want to go back that far to collect at the incorporated rate, which the power company was more than willing to do. They will go back thirty days from the date that they say these are all the addresses and they're confirmed. So, that will happen, but I have requested that they go back to the beginning of time and capture for us the unincorporated rate that they were charging per paid citizens. It is the practice of Georgia Power to collect that and put it into a statewide pool where all cities get a prorate share. They have told me, the regional managers told me that they would do that for us and would credit that back to us. We're working on it in advance with them, expect to hear probably within the next ten days when they will present that to the finance department, we'll let you know when that happens. So, that's, it's all moving in a positive way, very pleased about it.
All right, any questions about that?
So, we did decide just to go back thirty days, not try to capture, even if we could prorate it over a longer period of time, is that just too involved?
Was it March that I thought we were going back to?
It's whatever the date they say, if the date is today, they will charge for the month of May, and then they'll go back to April. I don't have an answer on that question, but thank you for reminding me, I will follow back up on that, because they were very amenable to whatever the city wanted to do.
I mean, I understand why we don't want a big, a larger amount, it's not a huge amount, it's less than the traffic company, but that hitting the bill once, on the other hand, as a city, I don't want to give up a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
If we could, it might be prorated over a year.
And I did ask the power company to give me that difference of collection period of unincorporated rate to the incorporated rate, because I still wanted you all to see that, I haven't received that yet from her. But I will go back and pose the question about spreading that out over the next eight months on that collection, and we can, and I'll share that with you all too.
Is there a possibility to go back to the first of the year and just get a dollar value?
Yes, that's what I've asked, yeah, starting January. For both, yes.
All right, thank you. And we were talking about the flood insurance.
Right.
RFP for San Antonio, is that?
Yes, the RFP is out on the street, the finance department prepared that and sent it to all known vendors. There's only about a handful, about eight of them, probably seven or eight in the metro area. And this is for us to, you know, get an idea of pricing, the level of service is identical to the Cat County, that's what we're looking for. We did include Proviso to give us a price on a pilot program, just to carve out a neighborhood or a route. We were told by vendors that that would be anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand rooftops for them to call out for a route, so we've included that. The RFP is also on the city's website announcing that. We've had some calls from some of the vendors that are interested in proposing, and most of those calls, if not all, Bonnie, you stepped in here, have been really in interest of asking if the city would be interested just in recycling. So, we're looking forward to seeing what we're going to get. The proposals are due, and they'll be open by the finance department on May the twenty-fourth. And we will inform council as to what that is, and then you all can make a decision as to whether or not you want to move forward. And you know that Mr. Gobian has been leading that, so we'll be communicating with him so that he can make sure you all are informed.
Who within the city would be doing review of the RFPs?
Our finance director, and I'll be helping with her.
Okay, so what day would they do?
They're due the twenty-fourth at two P M. And then, you know, they could come in early, but we'll open at two P M.
All right, we can go to the field update?
Yes, if you'll recall, when we, back in January, were going over fee schedule. And we did adopt the Decab County fee schedule, and I voiced my concern that it might not be enough to cover the cost of staff time. And we talked about coming back to report to you, and this is just to notify you that that's not been forgotten, and we'll be back on the twenty-eighth with capturing how many, how much of fees were collected, how much staff time was associated with that, where we see some areas for improvement, or where we see areas that could remain the same. So, we'll be reporting that back through community development on the twenty-eighth.
All right, Reid, Rebecca, Jim?
Jim and I have been reading signed ordinances, and we just wanted to start the discussion. If you remember, we passed a cleaned-up sign ordinance very early on, and with the intent of coming back and reviewing it. I think our lawyers and people would like a, thank you, a little bit. I think our lawyers and people would like a, thank you, a little bit more direction from the council as these are policy issues. I was starting to get a little alarmed because I've seen two new LCD billboards go up on Beaufort Highway. And while they don't, they don't meet the billboard standard, they're smaller, but they're blinking, twinkling, twirling lights.
A little on signs on, like a bit of pawn shop sign?
Yes, they're both like title mats.
So they're not a billboard, they're a sign?
No, they're like six by 10 or something maybe. They're in front of buildings. So just to open the discussion, just on the left you'll see, I've done a comparison between Brookhaven and Sandy Springs, Dunhill and Jones Creek. We've read their ordinances and just because we think they're peer cities and they too have gone through recent rewrites of both Fulton County and DeKalb codes. So for instance, on LED and LCD signs, our code allows them basically. Now in the other three municipalities, they've let out band them. So maybe we could just have a short discussion for starters on, you know, I mean, I think the arguments would be the LCD LED is kind of a Times Square looking, you know, it can be exciting and I'm sure the sign industry would tell you it's the latest, greatest penicillin of their, of their industry and because they're, they're changing, at least on the billboards, they're quite a robust income producer for the, for the sign companies. The options we would have is most of the ordinances on any kind of electronic signs, even if it's old-fashioned, kind of flipping, the message controls how many times a minute you can, you can change the signs. Ours is pretty wide open in terms of how many times you can change it. Just on my way over here, I was sitting at the intersection of Drew Hills County, how long the LCD billboard changes and it was one every 10 seconds. It was interesting that Sandy Springs has laid down some sightings of studies in their, they have banned LCD boards on Rossmore Road and Abernathy and Hammond specifically. Sighted studies that show that people stare at the LCD billboards for longer periods of time because of course it's so captivating, I guess, and have proven in many studies to in fact be a traffic hazard. So given the congestion on those particular arteries, they have, you know, cited studies to show that that was a good rationale. Again, you've got some of the same First Amendment issues with signs as you do with the other, you know, the adult ordinances that we've, we've talked about. So again, the ones that have just popped up recently are smaller, not quite the billboards. We know that our community has been pretty upset about that big LCD billboard that came up on Peachtree and then a new one came up in the PCID just days before the city of Brookhaven. Both were the result of legal settlements that were made with DeKalb County. We had no say over them, we had no recourse over them, there's nothing we can do about them.
And both are not permitted under us for, or would not be permitted?
So, and any thoughts on what we, what we think going forward on how we feel about, you know, I would say that maybe on, either Peachtree or certain places, maybe LCD is fine in terms of, you know, nightlife and kind of an exciting look. On the other hand, I think we all want to take into consideration what is, what is the, the look of our community, what is just adding to the sign pollution? You know, I think we think of ourselves as a pretty distinguished, tasteful community and just want to be cognizant that we don't have gyrating, moving carnival-like signs going on.
No street bargers. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to the LED or the LCD, I think that they're, first of all, they're a more efficient sign than, you know, even fluorescent or somebody old in the desert that is beginning to be phased out. But I think if we can find that, find some way to control them so that we have, we control the size, we control the rate of change of the signs so that it's not a, it's not a flashing neon billboard or something like that, control the rate. And also if they're being used for, say for instance, a multi-tenant building, that they're only advertising the things that the businesses that are, that are in that property so that they don't become many billboards. You know, they, they're so flexible, they can program anything into them. You start to see them beginning to run ads for things that may or may not be associated with what is at that location, you know. So again, I'm not necessarily opposed to them so long as we, as we provide some level of control so that they don't become...
And what would you think about controls on like dimming them at night or?
Some, you know, some of them, I mean, our, our code has, already has language to that extent for the signs that are located on schools, you know, which are potentially residential areas, you know, their billboards and everything. So I guess the, the question first of all is, is our LED LCD a, something you want to stay away from as a word there?
Our code already allows like the, the signs in front of Walgreens or the schools that will say PTA meeting tonight and it may crawl and it may scroll.
The bank time and temperature and kind of stuff.
You know, I, my, my preference is to stay away from LED, LCD signs, especially the bright ones. But, but is, you know, I, I think that technology has made LED and LCD a good medium to deliver information and so I don't want to ban it completely. And I think that if there are studies we can look at, the best practices on this, I mean, I certainly am no sign expert, but I think that there's bound to be a consensus or some, some source of information where we can look at, you know, best practices even outside, I think Dunhill and Sandy Springs, you cited some of their studies, that's, that's good information.
Well, we've actually read, a lawyer who helped us with the early sign ordinance gave us about a stack of signed studies from all over the country, some of them, very recent them, some of them going back by the ways. Mostly pertaining to billboards. And I think what we found with just reading ordinances, you know, when we looked at like Peachtree City and Hilton Head and Bydalia and some other places as well, you know, some people want to have a very unique, uniform look, very restrictive. I don't quite see, you know, we're already a settled community and I think we're a robust urban area as well, so I don't, I don't really see us going in that direction. On the other hand, I would like to personally clean up some of the visual pollution and kind of clean up our streetscapes and our look. I think I still want it to be...
For me on, I think I mentioned to y'all, I'd like us to be able to allow something like the Coca-Cola Roxy, their LED sign that they have up front. So if we can keep something like, allow that for it to happen on a business while at the same time making sure we don't have a lot of clutter.
All right. So do we agree LCD with restrictions?
Yeah, I would, I would say...
What's that?
You can't make any agreements.
Well, just as a discussion point, I think...
Okay, so in general?
In general. But I think, you know, to Jay Maxx's point, you know, it's also differentiating between wall, wall signs and monument, you know, between building signs, which is the Roxy versus freestanding signs, you know, out at the side of the road and all that stuff. I mean, that gives them some flexibility to, to include some of those things and...
You know, I'd like to see, you know...
In the art picture?
I believe Brookhaven is a very classy place and I'd like to see that same kind of, you know, this classic, you know, look, you know, not, you know. I, I think that lots of colors are, are things that I would like to stay away from. I think, you know, it's hard to overly...
Well, the thing is that our...
That's classy.
Yeah, I mean...
Our zoning does restrict where you can put certain signs. I mean, you, you don't want, some of these signs like right next to residential and our zoning already has some restrictions about that. So in what are purely commercial or even, you know, industrial areas to have slightly different restrictions.
And I think, you know, when you talk about areas like Beaufort Highway, very commercial corridor, you know, it is, it is distracting and I can see where Sandy Springs study, you know, when you're sitting in traffic and you start to read those things, you completely, you know, at a dead stop, you completely forget about looking at the car in front of you.
Watching TV.
Yeah. So I, I don't want that to occur on Beaufort Highway and I'd love us to consider some of those things, but how do you, how do you define those?
All right, let me just run through a couple of other things. A lot of places, we allow these big giant balloons, streamers, these gas-filled characters. In fact, I just saw some of them. There's that funny commercial where it gets grabbed by it. But, I mean, I just saw one of those driving over here right on Peachtree. Banners and flying gas.
The guys having a good time with the, you got the fuzzy, the hair blows out and it goes through his hair.
Right, right. You'll notice that all of our sister cities have banned those.
Yes.
For a certain amount of, should I say, non-classiness about them. Even Shamley has banned them from PI. So no more gorillas on top of them.
I love, I love to play with gorillas. My kids love to play with gorillas too.
The kids...
I didn't realize in the backyard they're not allowed to play with gorillas.
I hear there's going to be distress sales.
Your dad's been playing with gorillas.
Cox?
Any thoughts on that? They're, I think they're opposed to the...
Yeah, and anything that's temporary without a permit, you know, to sort of pop up literally and figuratively, I just, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of it because we have no control over them.
Most of the time, don't you see those like during special events?
Exactly, that's what I've...
Well, the special event seem to be, you know, the Sprint special event, we go on for six months.
We should have a time limit.
Is that the exception or is that the rule? Let's get, just get practical.
We're going to talk about banners in a minute, which will have, I, I'm actually kind of a stickler about that and think that we should time limit that because you see banners starting to be used as permanent signs and stay up forever. And I think we've just got to start cleaning that up. But this is the special event balloons, running gas guys.
I think you should allow them with a time limit because they can be, I've seen, I know what y'all are saying that they, after all, the Sprint special event has been going on for six months and that black and white, down at the yellow screen on it, he's been dancing for six months.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I don't want to ban them, but I think there should be a later...
You know, it seems difficult to, I'd like some more time to kind of think about it. I don't know about this portion we have worked out.
This is just open discussion. So be thinking about it and start noticing that, where they are and how long they stay. Same thing with banners. You know, we've, we've got DeKalb's code, which is 15 square feet and you can have two at a time, but it doesn't time limit it. The others all have it a little bit bigger with a 14-day limit with only three times a year. Now, having run a health club in the past, we always put up a big banner in January or for a big summer special or something, but we would be real careful to take it down after, you know, a certain time.
Sandwich pors?
Well, in any case, on the banners, do we all agree? Well, we're not agreeing. Can we just say that we think it's a good idea to...
Think about it and we'll come back around.
Think about what would be the restrictions there.
What I would like us to consider is that as we're a...
Not agreeing.
Can I not say what I'd like?
What I'd like is to think about...
We just can't make a decision here.
Is the fact that right now I think we have, we have signs popping up that are not really in, in, in character with what we'd like to see, you know, in parts of this...
Permanent signs or banner signs?
Permanent signs. And I, I'd like to, because this discussion is going to create a possible flurry of activity to get it in before the city makes, changes the rules. You know, I, I'd like to consider a possible moratorium on signs, you know, until we address this issue because permanent signs are very difficult to change and...
That would be saying you'd have a business can put a sign up for 1690 days.
Well, just possibly on a portion, you know, just for a per, you know, some of the things that we have contentious issues with, I think LED, LCD is, you know, the size of it, the color, that's a permanent sign with a big investment that, you know, if, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. Because I think that once they're there, it's very difficult to change and it does affect not just that property, but the whole character area of, of the block.
Well, it would be possible, I'm told, for us to impose immediately a moratorium on the LCD LED signs. I would be reluctant to impose a blanket sign.
Yeah.
Because you don't want, you don't want somebody who's opening a business tomorrow and not placing a sign.
Yeah.
And maybe over a certain size or...
Yeah, I mean, I think possibly restricted over certain size.
I think that if I may, there's a, there are first amendment restrictions on these kinds of moratoriums. You're looking at a pretty comprehensive thing. You already have a two-person committee that's working on it. I would suggest to you that there's, there's, things may happen, things may not happen. I would suggest to you that the committee continue to work with the community development department and the legal department and continue, get it to a place where there, there's something that's crafted that, that brings it to a point that the rest of the, the rest of the council members could then with some kind of, we would have things that we would actually have to talk about and then bring it to where there's a conclusion rather than this, an ad hoc kind of thing that we're, we're sort of building up right here.
I just think she's trying to get a sense of what, is anybody saying, I don't want to do that? I mean, I should want to know before you start going forward.
Well, I certainly understand that. But what I, but I'd like, but if we're looking at a process...
It's a first amendment issue.
Yes, I think it's much more productive to go ahead and have, and have something to present to the rest of the council.
We've got these, we have this.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Consider these.
It's great stuff.
Anything else?
I like...
No, I just, you know, you know the restrictions and we can't all talk to each other on a regular basis anyway.
Now we can't talk, I know.
Can you, you know, along those lines, so that we can continue that effort, can you provide a, a copy of the Sandy Springs and the, and the Brookhaven ordinance in a Word format so that we can begin to...
I can, I can, I can give, I can give you all the ones through the Muni code because they'll, they'll give it to me all the way.
Although that's not on the Muni code.
Yeah, I'd like to get it in a Word format so that we can begin to make those changes and highlight the changes. You know, that's the most efficient way. If we are going to, if we are going to put forward something, you know, like when we're talking to you or just between us, to be able to highlight changes, it's easier if we get a Word format.
So would you highly recommend, again, say imposing an LCD LED moratorium immediately?
I think that, I think that is, I think that is something you should take to your committee and you can just make a determination of what's appropriate at that point in time.
She's asking you, you have to come, I guess you all have to consult with him separately if he has.
Well, I did talk to Lenny and Lenny said we could impose one.
For specific things, if you're planning on doing specific rewrites of narrow codes actually rather soon, but to put a moratorium on very broad part of the sign ordinances you all have started discussing...
No, I was just talking about LED, LCD.
Yeah, but you're going to have to have in mind exactly what you somewhat kind of want to do before you do that because you put that on there for 1690 days, you come back around, there will be very little opportunity and very little reason for you to ever extend it because of the first amendment issue. So I would, you know, if you have a committee to look over this and start the process to kind of look on it and once it's in some kind of a tangible format coming back in front of you, then you can put in a moratorium real quick, just put it through the ZPA process to get it back to you.
Right.
But at this point, I think that the ideas are way too broad and kind of amorphous to be able to do anything in terms of...
Joe?
I doubt challenge you when you come back to us is to provide a vision of what you see signage-wise. Because I'm having, I'm having a little problem with the conversation, my people throwing...
I can tell you what my vision is, but I'm trying to get a sense of what we all, we all see as it is.
We have to start from square one.
So I'd love to hear what your vision is so we can maybe talk about that offline and exchange ideas.
And it's great, I think, to get our input as council. Is it worthwhile to have something like this on the website and get feedback from people to see if what...
Well, at some point, we definitely need to talk to our business community and... Well, at some point, we definitely need to talk to our business community and then, look, some of them have already volunteered to be on this committee. We just, we, again, we need to get something more specific in front of people before we start this discussion.
I'm also going to suggest that we probably look to include a chamber of congressmen.
Absolutely.
All right.
We would be happy to put the, when you have your committee needs to put the notice on the website and try and send it out through the newsletter to get some citizens.
Stream buffer ordinance.
As Maria indicated, there are a lot of different things that we're looking at that we need to tweak. We want to make sure that the ordinances that we have in place should be in place. And what we're finding with the stream buffer ordinance is that it is more restrictive than what the state model calls for. So we'd like to take a look at that and I think, Rich, if you can kind of explain in a nutshell the difference between the cities versus the state.
Sure. Yeah, what, the model or the ordinance that you adopted from DeKalb is a 75-foot no impervious surface, or no, a 75-foot no encroachment buffer. The model ordinance that the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District has that all the Metro North Georgia cities are compelled to adopt is a 50-foot no encroachment buffer plus a 25-foot no impervious surface setback. So essentially, you can grade in that from 75 feet to 50 feet, you can grade in that area, but you can't build anything. 50 feet down to the stream would be no encroachment. And so the, you can see that the model is a little bit less stringent than-
Most might want to build a deck over near stream in their backyard.
Yeah, they need to get variance for that, they need to apply for variance.
With no whole 75 or just the first 50?
Or the 425.
They, that would probably be considered impervious, a deck, so.
Wait a minute, a deck is, you have plants growing under my deck, how is that considered impervious?
Well, I mean, it-
We can make that exception right now.
Jim, those are weeds, those aren't plants.
I would think Brookhaven, we wouldn't want to say a deck is impervious service if it's a wooden deck.
I mean, if it's a concrete deck.
So if we wanted, for instance, to change our stream buffer too, we have to abide by the 25-foot state buffer, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's actually completely, a completely different ordinance, that's in the erosion control ordinance.
Okay, but the county is the other 50 feet, right?
What we adopt is what the county has.
Right. The city's buffer is 50, 50 feet plus, or it is currently 75 feet from the edge of the stream out.
Which includes the 25 feet of state.
Right, which includes the 25 feet.
Okay, so what if we determined that we thought just an additional 25 instead of the 50 foot was adequate? Would you do that?
You can do that, but the consequences will probably be that the state will, or that DCA will not recognize you as a qualified level government. You'll jeopardize your qualified level government status because you haven't adopted a, an ordinance that's required by the state and then the MS-
The state has the 25, but she was talking about adding another 25.
But they've added a model ordinance on top of that that they require you to adopt if you want to be, if you want to play their game.
Is the model ordinance calling out for 50 feet on top of the mandated 25?
No, 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 no. It's a total, it's a total of 75. The last 25 feet is the area you can approach in.
Okay.
Currently, we can't, we can't allow that. So this allows us more flexibility and still allows us to provide the protection we need to the community.
So it's still 75 feet, you can just have a variance to go to the 50 foot.
Right.
Right now, you cannot go to the 50.
Yeah, right now, it's no, no encroachment.
How does that not qualify as a taking?
I'm not an attorney, so.
How does that not qualify as a taking?
So it's property regulations, it doesn't destroy the value of the property to have the 75-foot buffer?
But there are certain lots in Brookhaven where they're not buildable because there's a 75, a 15 to 75-foot buffer. How does that not qualify as a taking when, for instance, the three lots that we just looked at on Alta Vista, those three lots are flat lot, perfectly acceptable, used to be billable until the stream buffer came into place, now they're not billable. How is that not a taking?
Because first of all, once again, it's required by the state for us to do this, these buffers, so if they have an issue-
That qualifies as a state requirement, not a taking.
Yeah, if there's an issue with that, there's a state, we're not taking it properly. We're required to do what the state has told us to do.
And overarching, overarching cross reason of why the buffer's in effect with protecting water quality and looking at the quantity of water and how the streams are affected and they then lead into our drinking source. So there is a mechanism through the state model that is more flexible than our current model, so if we do move forward with making amendments, I would recommend we-
But aren't there other, you know, I mean, a stream buffer is just a, we throw the blanket out there, we catch everything. There are other ways to provide the same end result, water quality.
Yeah.
There are, I mean, there are mechanical and physical structures that can be installed and implemented, but we have the option to allow those and to truly reduce the, you know, does the model ordinance let us get in the 50 feet if we, if we have the additional-
If you apply for a variance, you have to provide a mitigation measure?
So you can provide a variance beyond, under the 50 if you have a mitigation. Did our ordinance say that?
We would have to write the ordinance to reflect that.
Do you recommend that?
Yes.
So we can go, I'm sorry, we can go into the 50, we can go 25 to 50, or is it 50 to 75?
It's 75, then the other 25, which is the 50, and then the 25, which is the state. And the state buffer would be considered by the state for variance from the state.
But with appropriate mitigation, can we get down within 26 feet of the stream? Or do we have to be 51 feet of the stream?
If you had appropriate mitigation.
We can get down, we get down, okay.
And the ZPA can currently provide those variances?
Not for that one.
The current ordinance has a much more restrictive regime for variances. It's, there's, it's rather complex, but basically the city has administrative authority to grant variances from 75 to 50 feet.
However, let me interrupt, the administrative variance authority still is posting a sign, waiting, hearing from the public, so really it should be a developmental engineering call as to whether or not that mitigating proposal is acceptable.
Is that, does this model ordinance anticipate that?
Will allow it.
Model ordinance actually looks at having an appointed board make variance calls. However, I think because DeKalb County has turned it into administrative variance, the state has probably, you know, allowed administrative variances to occur and so we would have to write the ordinance, we'd have to rewrite some of that model ordinance.
You're saying that DeKalb awards is more restrictive, but you're saying they give administrative variances on it?
They do.
Is that within the first 50 feet?
That's just the way the buffer-
The first 50 feet.
It's within, it's typically just within the 75-foot to 50-foot portion of the buffer.
That's the first 50 feet, correct? Because the 25 running parallel to the stream can't be encroached upon because that's the state protected waterways.
Right, unless you do a variance from the state.
Correct, okay. But the first 50, before you get to that magic 25, can be encroached or varied administratively in the county.
Zero to 25 can.
Right.
Only in some cases can 25 to 50 be.
Okay.
It's a complex thing.
Right, right.
Thinking in reverse way.
So we need to-
I'm thinking of how, wait, what if waters are within the-
So obviously there needs to be a change.
What I would like to see is for us to be as flexible as we can, model ordinance recognize with allowing people to provide either a stream buffer or some other acceptable engineering practice or mitigation or whatever so that if people choose to go that route, they can enjoy the full value of their property or the full use of their property. It may cost them more money, but they're able to use it and let them make the choice of, do I want to stay out of the 50 feet or do I need to get into the 50 feet and is it worth X to me to get in there, which would be the cost of those additional items that are required for mitigation? Because, you know, I'm a big proponent, there's a lot of methods out there that can achieve the same end result that a stream buffer is.
Well, we hear what you're saying. We understand that you want the streamlining, but we also understand that you want to make sure that we're looking at the environmental aspects of it and we're going to do the right thing and deal with the engineering practices.
Make it more reasonable right now.
And most importantly, that we provide, if possible, additional flexibility for single family lots that were plotted prior to the adoption of the stream buffer because those are folks that got caught with an administrative change, nothing that they did diminished the usability of the property. So we can figure out what the date is and we can provide additional flexibility for those plotted lots prior to that period.
Other thing is, is commercial, is this applied to commercial, same as residential?
Yes, yes.
When you look at-
Should it be more restrictive or should it be?
I was going to say, when you look at these model ordinances, I would, I would really love for us to anticipate that maybe we can find stretches of like Peachtree Creek that could be suitable for some development of restaurants or where you could sit by the creek and then actually enjoy it instead of have it hidden away somewhere where we could put more trails along Nansen Creek without, you know, none of us want to, want to affect or harm the water quality or the environment, but we'd really like to alter it up to enjoyment. Water features incredibly valuable resource, whether home or commercial.
All right. Let's resume the C-Hub. Let's resume the C-Hub.
I was just in Fort Worth and we had delightful dinners right on the treadmill and it was fantastic.
It would be great. Do you think we could get that through?
Maybe.
Nice little deck overlooking the lake.
Yeah. All right, announce, is anybody going to announce?
Brookhaven Bowl is this Saturday. We need volunteers beginning at 4:00 AM if anybody's interested. But no, if you want to run, it's the race actually at South Smart today, come join us and the city will have a table staffed by some of our hotel folks, I believe, and they're going to be bringing some stuff, so after the race, if you're, feel free to stop by and hang out at the table if you're there.
All right. Okay, I think that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, please give us a vote.
I.
All vote. Adjourn.